The agenda of the Board of Education norms, which are available in the board packet, and then approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda of December 19th, 2023, regular open session meeting.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And next, we have the MSBA Monthly Report.
The December edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the 2023 MSBA Annual Conference in Cooperation with MASA and MOASBO. This year's event was once again held in Kansas City. MSBA President Ruth Johnson got the conference off to a great start during the first general session. During her remarks, she shared the story of her transformative journey through public education and how school board members make journeys like hers possible.
Each of you, as passionate members of your local school boards, holds a key to that transformation for your students. Your belief in their potential, regardless of their background, can change the course of their entire lives. You possess the ability to pave the way for brighter futures, offering hope and opportunities where none seem to exist. Education is the great equalizer, breaking down the walls that social and economic hardships build. It provides a platform for dreams to flourish, talents to be nurtured, and potentials to be realized. As members of the school board, we are the gatekeepers of this transformative power, able to shape educational policies and programs, that level the playing field and other genuine opportunities for all.
ABC News veteran and creator and host of What Would You Do?, John Quinones, was the keynote speaker for the second general session of the conference. His presentation detailed his odds-defying journey and celebrated the life-changing power of education.
Yes, today, I wouldn't be the man I am today had it not been for the education I received in public school and then in college, at a time when all the odds were stacked against me. And then along came my first hero besides my mother and father, and it was my English teacher, my English teacher, Mrs. Gutierrez, in 10th grade at Brackenridge High School, when everyone else had told me, "You're not college material. You know, no one in your family has ever gone to college. You speak with a funny accent. You don't have any money. Your grades aren't all that great." When those teachers, you know, what gives you the audacity, John Quinones, to think you can go to college? When those teachers told me that, my high school English teacher, Mrs. Gutierrez, did the opposite. She said, "Johnny, I love the way you write your essays in English class. I love the way you tell stories. Have you thought about journalism?"
Missouri's 2024 Teacher of the Year Greg Kester spoke during the conference's third general session and banquet. Kester is a social studies teacher at Petosi High School in the Petosi R3 School District. He said that when people wonder about the status of our state and nation, the answers we are looking for are right in front of us.
The test of a nation's status is the quality of its citizenry. And I have good news. My country is full of good, quality citizens. I'm staring at a group of good, quality people right now, and I can prove it. What do you call a person who runs for an elected office that does not pay? Now, that sounds like a school board member, but at the core, it is really just a quality person. The key attribute to the best quality people is not their patience, not their ability to forgive the eternally unhappy, but their capacity to love and to serve. It is easy to love one's spouse, one's family, one's friend, and one's neighbor. The capacity to love and serve in this instance in which I speak is love for what I refer to as the generalized other, which is much more difficult. The generalized other is the person that you may never meet, the person whose name you will never know, or the kid attending your school district that you will never see. It is this ability to love and serve that is required of elected school board members every day. This love and service is a reflection of people of quality and citizens of virtue. These are the people who run for an office, not to build a resume, not for personal gain, but to serve their neighbor, their community, and the children in their local public school. It is a great thing, this thing we call public service.
In addition to the outstanding general sessions, the conference featured more than 70 concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics, Missouri's premier education trade show, the Education Expo, MSBA Student Showcase of Public School Programs, and much more. MSBA's Delegate Assembly also met in conjunction with the annual conference to establish the position statements that will guide advocacy work throughout the coming year. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thank you for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and thank you for your dedication and the amazing work you've done throughout all of 2023 to ensure all students succeed. We'll see you again in January of 2024 for the next MSBA Board Report.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second. A motion in a couple of seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have guidelines for public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. Per policy, BDDH-1, public participation at board meetings, the following rules apply to the public comment portion of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during the period. Each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Discussion will be limited to items from the posted agenda. All speakers must provide their name and address prior to speaking. And if there is insufficient time for everyone to speak, the board will encourage participants to submit their questions in writing or utilize the process for putting an item on the agenda. I do not have any public comment cards. All right, thank you, sir. Next, we have the report of the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
First, on the superintendent's report is a reminder about the annual school board election. It will be Tuesday, April 12th. We have two terms expiring, Mrs. Geraldine Diesel and Mr. David Bova, both of which who showed up at the board office and filed to run again. The filing dates, it opened on December 5th. It will continue until December 26th. Nobody will be at the board office on December 25th, but between Chrissy and I, we'll get December 26th until 5:00 p.m. covered. Next on my report is kindergarten registration. St. Genevieve Elementary School will have kindergarten registration on Saturday, March 2nd, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Bloomsdale Elementary School will have kindergarten registration on Saturday, March 23rd, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Scheduling of appointments will begin on Monday, February 5th. Please call those 883-4500 and the appropriate extension to get those appointments scheduled and get those kiddos in. And now, I am going to turn it over to Dr. McCleod for a Backpack for Friday update.
All right, thank you. So Backpack for Fridays, we're able to go over this every year, and every year, I'm able to display all the giving people, and this is an appropriate time of year to remind people, since it's the season of giving, to give back, and this is a much-needed practice of ours. So it's sponsored by the Southeast Missouri Food Bank, and the way we have it set up is they've changed kind of their packaging. So it used to be some items that maybe kids wouldn't be able to make on their own, like beans. So they've changed some of the packaging to make it a little bit more accessible to some of the students that may be the latchkey kind of students, that reduce the amount of food in the backpack. So what we've done is we've basically doubled up in order to give them about the same amount of food as they have in years past. The cost on that is actually less than what we've reported in previous years, so that's good news as well. And it lasts 36 weeks, starts in September, gives us a little bit of a chance to kind of get things rolling, and then it goes all the way to May. And so we're funded through donations. Several community organizations and businesses and individual community members, including some of our teachers, give to that, so we're very thankful for that. So we support students with 55 backpacks, and in Bloomsdale, that's 21, and then in St. Gene Elementary, we have 34, and just to kind of give you the enrollment there. So it's not a huge portion of our student population, but it's definitely a needed amount. We want to give a special thanks to the people that help run it. It's not just something that we just roll out and the students get it. There takes a lot of communication and planning. So the Stars Program and Mr. Robinson and Mr. Hole and Ms. Grine all work together to make sure that we load the backpacks. We get them on huge pallets. Sometimes it takes a little bit of organizing because it comes from that food bank, and they do a good job of communicating with them on how it should be arranged prior to getting to us, so then they can sort them and make sure that each backpack has what it needs. And then our counselors at both SGE and BLE have done a great job of making sure we identify students and work with families to see if they are willing to accept a backpack, and they do a great job of being able to adjust that if maybe they need it for five weeks because of maybe a circumstance where there's a loss of employment, but they're able to gain employment. So they're very good at recognizing the need within their own buildings. And then our maintenance department does a great job of making sure that we coordinate those deliveries out to Bloomsdale to get them there on a weekly basis. And then, of course, our building administration makes sure that we're keeping the program rolling along. These are all our donors. I won't read through all of them because there's a significant amount, but I did want to point out that we have gained, I believe, nine new donors this year. So new to our list, we have nine new people or groups. And we've talked about the possibility of sending out reminders to those that have given in the past, just to kind of ask them, "Hey, are you willing to do that?" We also know there's other good organizations to contribute to, so we understand if some people decide to spread some of their donations to other organizations as well. But sometimes it just needs a reminder as far as letting people know that we still appreciate the donations. And so with that being said, we just want to point out that if you ever, it's not a "you have to do it in August," or "you have to do it in September or December." If there's any point that people want to donate, we want to make sure that they have my contact information so they can do so. So they can either email me, or they can call us at 883-4500 and our extension of 2006. And that's all I have for Backpacks for Friday. Any questions?
Is the cost still 350, or did it?
So the cost, did I not do the math? Did I not change the math on that?
Well, so it's 280.
Yeah, I didn't change it on that one. Yeah, 280.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. So if you want to support one student throughout the whole year, if you write a check for $280, that takes care of one family for the year.
So cheaper.
Yep.
Can you donate any amount, Dr. McCleod?
Good question, yeah. We'll take a dollar. We'll take $20. Every dollar does matter, and if people want to round it up to 300 and say, "Okay, we can put some into the next backpack," that helps as well. Yeah. And really, this program exists on donations, so if we can get surplus to kind of ensure, "Hey, we have next year taken care of," like ideally, that's a place we would like to get to.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda are principal reports.
Was it short, because Mrs. Huberly's name was listed first there?
So good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to start the first slide with some generous donations. Our building works very hard to help support Shop With a Cop. So Mrs. Greminger, one of our elementary counselors, she did a fundraiser, and two of our students there, Hope Clayton and Keaton James, helped present a check for over $900 to Shop With a Cop, so we were very proud of that. On the right-hand side there is former St. Genevieve Elementary Principal, Mr. Bobby Webb, and every year, he makes a donation to our library. He doesn't want the big check because he doesn't want, you know, the amount known. He just wants to contribute every year. And Mrs. Yuting, our librarian, is accepting the check, and she takes the money and buys new books for the library, and so that's very generous. And then in the middle, we have two members of the local Baptist church, Rachel Wybrecht and Becca Sumner, and they did sort of an appreciation cart for our teachers, and they just showed up one day unannounced and went around and delivered treats to the teachers, and they were very excited. Okay, so we had a Christmas assembly on December 8th, and one of the reasons that we had it that early is because Mrs. Kieker and Mrs. Wibbenmeyer and Ms. Ochsner wanted to involve the high school groups. We had the Emeralds, we had the Cheerleaders. I don't have the band pictured there, so thank you, Dr. Boyd, for allowing them to participate. The original date was set for this Friday, but these guys are all taking finals, so that didn't work. So we had to change that. The three ladies, Ms. Wibbenmeyer, Ms. Kieker, and Ms. Ochsner, they choreographed, like it was a production. The kids danced, the Emeralds put on a performance, the Cheerleaders cheered. Up at the top, you could see they had some games where the teachers were decorating their students. Santa made an appearance, and he read a book to the students, so it was a wonderful production, and greatly appreciated that we were allowed to use the pack and they could participate with us. So, and I have to put this in there, our winning tree, I know there was a lot of controversy there, but I'm just going to say, elementary people know how to work a rubric, and so we worked the rubric and we got full points. And as, because we won on Monday, Dr. Taylor and Dr. McCleod and Dr. Drury made some pancakes for our staff, and they served us, and it was very nice, so thank you. And then we have at the bottom, the kindergarten Christmas performance, and if you've ever experienced that, it doesn't really matter what they do. That is just the cutest production ever. So that was a great performance. Second grade also had a Christmas performance, but they used the handbells and they used recorders, and they put on a full concert, and that was amazing. I was really a little worried when she said, "Oh, we're doing bells and recorders." I'm like, "Okay, so this should be great." But it was great. At the bottom right, we just have one of our dress-up days, and in the top middle, we have Mrs. Roth and two of our students dressed up as Santa. Then we have our second quarter power leaders. Each quarter, we do this. We go out, we take the trolley. But I really wanted to focus on the fact, the bottom there, we had seven students that made the Hall of Fame, and the Hall of Fame means that they have been a power leader at least three times at St. Genevieve Elementary while they were there, and then we take their picture and we hang them in the ramp hallway for everyone to see. So those are our newest inductees. And then we have our positive office referrals. Chase Gretzmerker, Brooklyn Gabar, Brooke Jokers, Aaron Ideman, Desmond Cash, Daniel Baloo, Chloe Hill, and again, Gus Cudding, Elizabeth Kelly, Dixie Ray Yurk, Jayden Ferris, Jayden Valdez, Jagger LaPlante, Henry Gack, Liam Gack, Liam Edwards, Keegan Hapgood, Adam Bosler, Nora Donovan, Race Riley, Michael Willhite, Lilian Adams, Rex Geisner, Ruby Wibbenmeyer, Rain Hampton, River Reese. So we started putting together this video just because we like to give everyone their moment of fame, and it just seems like each month, the number of students that we get are growing, and so this is one of the only ways that we can come up with to recognize them. So thanks for entertaining us and letting us put this together.
Santa's watching, so there's more of them.
What?
Santa's watching.
Santa is watching, and believe me, we've used that a few times. So our feature teacher and superstaff for December are Sarah Roth and Stephanie Kuntzel. Ms. Sarah Roth received numerous nominations, and most of which encompassed her ability to create memories and experiences for her students. And if you've ever walked by Sarah's room, there is always something going on. You know, she's got a chimney built for her students. At Thanksgiving, she organized her room to have a feast. Right now, if you walk past her hallway, it looks like a winter wonderland. She has blowups, she has lights. I mean, it's the full experience at all times. But Sarah's not all fun and games. She really puts an emphasis on academics, but she makes it fun for the students, and so for that, she was recognized. And when I told her I needed to get her picture, she goes, "Oh, my gosh, this is what I'm wearing, but I'm doing it." And it just kind of summarizes Sarah's personality, and it was just a great picture. And then Ms. Kuntzel, she's one of our title-one instructional aides, and she too received many nominations. Most were for her calm, passionate demeanor. The kids love to work with her, they love to be in her groups, and Steph is just willing to do whatever needs to be done for the students and the teachers. And so those are our feature teacher, superstaff winners. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, we will start with our faculty and staff of the month in Bloomsdale. Mrs. Vinton, she was nominated by several teachers. Christie is such a great coworker. She has made our transition back to school so easy and made sure that we had everything we needed to start the week. She worked so hard this past year over the summer to make sure ELA curriculum was ready to go. And then it was actually, this was supposed to be Ms. Harmon and Ms. Farr. It was a combined thing, but Ms. Harmon would not take any credit. The secretaries, as we all know, are amazing in all of our buildings, so our teachers have recognized that. We have the best secretaries. They are in the front line every single day, answering to administrators, teachers, and parents. We appreciate you both. The other day, Andrea and I had to cover for the secretaries for a little bit when they enjoyed the luncheon, and we were so nervous to cover the office. We're like, "Your job is way harder than ours." Okay, our positive office referrals, Colton Welsh, Easton Haynes, Beckett Grine, Lucas Palmer, Addison Bone, Kayden Marler, Xander Murray, Grady Wolke, Gabby Moran, Nora Seer, Logan Everett, and Avery Winehouse. Okay, we participated in the Hour of Code this past month. We had a group of fourth and fifth graders that are experts at coding. They meet once a week with, well, they were meeting with Mrs. Yuting when she was in the building, and so they went around. We had an hour where all the, the whole building was doing coding. Some of the younger ones were on Scratch Junior, and then the older ones on code.org. But the kids love it. We've done this every year for the past, you know, four years, I think, so they really do enjoy that time, and the leaders enjoy helping everyone. Our toy drive for Adely, we've done this for the past three years, where the students in the building bring in toys, and they're donated to the Children's Hospital in St. Louis in honor of Adely, and then those are the fifth-grade leaders that help with that. We had our first and second grade bell concert, and just like Nanya had said, we had the bells, and they did such a great job. I don't know how you can get little ones like that to go on key with the bells, but they sure did, and we had several parents comment how wonderful it was, and they were excited we were able to use the pack for that. So it's nice every once in a while for us to bring our children in to use the facility. And when we found out St. Gene Elementary did the Shop With a Cop donation, we thought, you know, we should be doing that as well. Officer Finch had said that donations were down this past year, so we did a donation with, just from the teachers, and I believe it was 320 or 360 is what we raised to donate with, to shop with the cop, and they were very appreciative. They do a lot for our families. We had family fun night this past week, and Santa came. The theme was Christmas Around the World, so every, all the teachers had different stations set up with the theme Christmas Around the World, and we had over 300, I think they said 320, in attendance. So we had a great turnout, and everyone had a good time. Santa's always a big hit, so we only had a few tears. And then we had the NED assembly. When I was younger, I feel like this is the same thing we had years ago. I don't know if you had it whenever you were a principal too or not, but he's been around forever. But NED stands for Never Give Up, Encourage Others, and Do Your Best, and it's just a character education assembly. They come out free of charge. All you have to do is sell their yo-yos. So we did that, and it was kind of nice to put a toy in kids' hands that, you know, some of them have never held a yo-yo before, so that was nice to see. And then they were playing with them at recess, so it was enjoyable. So I wish you all a Merry Christmas, enjoy your families, and happy holidays. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As always, I thank you for the opportunity. Tonight, instead of comments, I've prepared a short video for you. I hope you'll enjoy that, and Merry Christmas from SGMS.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Okay, so before we move on, some of these first pictures. On the left there is Ms. Newman's, or I guess now she's Mrs. Coyer's, Nutrition and Health Class, and they're making pasta. On the bottom is Ms. Yamnet's Forensics Class, and that's Jada arresting Ms. Shelley Dallas in the office. And the very top is Mr. Diamond's Advanced and Organic Chemistry Class, just doing some lab work. Okay. So this month, I was the Rotary Student of the Month, and Brian Schmidt was the Elk Student of the Month. And we have this stuff. Thanks. I have the stickers messed up, but. So for Positive Office Referrals, we had James Vogt, Celine Rainey, Cole Nicholson, Jeremy Dunsey Jr., Brendan Sexton, Troy Hurst, Trenton Weber, Hawthorne Jokers, Emily Merrifield, Lily Reed, Kirsten Reeves, Lucy Sears, Colin Haynes, Gage Schennerbarger, Evan Winters, Joseph Rottler, Cadence Hutchins, Jacob Brissette, Audrey Gek, Camille Milan, Jersey Quinn, J.C. Bowman, Taysha De Clu, Aiden Eisenbeis, Sadie Griminger, Caleb Capps, Jaylen Brawley, Carly Farnow, Xana Powell, Charles McGuire, and Lauren Wright. Okay, so this is pretty exciting. So Mrs. Bowman's Art Class, she had two students who were in charge of making some sort of seat. And on the left there is Mallory Rottler. She said it took her, oh, their assignment was to find their own materials to make. And they had, I think she said, six weeks. But Mallory did it in one week, and she did it with her dad. And then on the right is Sawyer Bowman, who is super proud of that bench. And it is, it's still in the, I don't know if you guys have seen it, it's still in front of the office. He also made it with his dad, and it took him, I think, three or four weeks. Took him a month. And it's extremely impressive, both of them.
The tailgate actually opens, and it's actually a storage area inside of there. It's pretty impressive.
It is super impressive.
There was some significant welding involved in that first one, wasn't there?
Yeah. And it's cool to see all of it.
And I was a little nervous moving that. And it's like, "Oh, it'll be fine." And I was like, getting coke sherry.
I think it's cool that they found all of those materials also. Like, it's all recycled, so. And it's sad that Charlie's not here because he got the Patched Overalls Award. He is, I was talking to him today about it. I hate that he's not here to tell you himself. He's, on July 14th, he's flying out to Boston, where he's going to attend a summer engineering camp for three weeks. He's taking a journal, and he said he's going to log his experience through that, and that during those three weeks, he's going to be learning about electrical, I wrote it down, electrical, mechanical, and some computer programming. So that was really cool. And then I'm supposed to tell you that that is his GoFundMe QR. He's really close to his goal. He's really close to his goal, but he said any kind of money will help, so. So some other really, really cool stuff that we've done this year is, we have started, I don't know if any of you guys have been down in the locker room area, but we've started to display some of the best moments of our sports. And we're trying to really showcase our spirit crowds. We're trying not to just like slap random pictures up for just everything, but more of the moments that are really, really special and are super memorable. So right now, that bottom one was one of the finalist games for volleyball. And it not only showcases how pumped and full our spirit crowd is, but it also shows the emotions of our volleyball players and just how serious of a moment that was. And then that top is Homecoming Football. And it's crazy to see all of the green and how packed that spirit crowd is. So we're waiting for more special moments throughout the year, whether that's wrestling, whether it's girls, whether it's softball, whether it's track. So we're waiting to fill those in. And then how we're making those. Mr. Roth's School Development Seminar is collaborating with Dr. Nix to pick out these pictures, and then we print them with Mr. Roth's banner maker. And then we go and we tape off how big it's going to be. And whenever we get our Plexiglas, that way whoever the workers are that are putting it up know where it's going, where it's, like, exact location. So that's really, really cool, and we're really proud of that. This morning, we, every year for finals, we do a Cookies and Cramming. And instead of that, we wanted to change it up, and our admin made pancakes for us this morning. And this picture displays, doesn't even display how many kids were there. It was a great turnout. I think we even ran out of pancakes throughout the day-to-day. And that's crazy, because I think we had a lot of stuff. But throughout the day-to-day.
And they all came at once, too.
It's a big wave. I heard throughout the day-to-day how many people were talking about it. They really, really loved it. So I guess we have to do it again next semester. It was a really, really good turnout. A lot of people really appreciated that, so thank you. My personal favorite is sports. So let's start with girls' basketball with that amazing chest bump picture. So they're currently 3-3, and they've won against West County, Grandview, and Kingston. And they play away tomorrow at Herkey. And then boys' basketball, they are 2-5, 5 being losses. But they've won against De Soto and Valley. And then they play tonight at Pacific away. And then wrestling are kicking some butt this year. They are, they got first at the Union Tournament, second at the Steve Leslie Invitational. They got 9-1 at the Sam Richardson Duels. And then overall, they've had 4-0 in all their duels. So they're really, really doing good this year. We're really proud about that. So for clubs, Speech and Debate on the bottom there. Trey and Alyssa are both regional champs. They all went to the Missouri East Speech Association and competed. Trey Bloom is a regional champ from the Lincoln Douglas Debate, and Alyssa with informative speaking. Reagan Wench got second in poetry reading. Jeremiah Coons got third in extemporaneous speaking. And Bennett Walls got fourth in storytelling and humorous interpretation. So that's really, really cool. So French on top for Club Day. I ended up sitting in on this and getting to see it, and it was really, really cool to see what they were doing. They were learning about, I'm going to butcher this. They were learning about Bouches de Noel, which is the Yule Log cake. And they got to make their own, but try an actual one. And I got to try it too, and it was really, really good. But that was just something different that French Club got to do that was really unique. So FCA on the bottom there. I think for the past few years, they've been, we deliver Thanksgiving meals. It goes back to our community, to Bloomsdale. And I think this year, we kind of stretched to the Farmington area of people who don't have a family or don't make their meals. So they apply, they give us their address and how many meals they need. And we go to Mimi's, we tell them that. Mimi's assembles it. And then FCA got together with Stuco and NHS. We all met at Mimi's. We were putting stickers on that some of the FCA people made on the boxes for, that said Bible verses on them. And then we would load them up into boxes with the addresses of like the area it would be in, and you would carpool and deliver them. And it was just, it's such a rewarding thing that's unique, and it goes back to our community. So that was really special. And then the other thing that I didn't get a picture of was, FCA did kind of like an adopt a child thing, but it was for young mothers. So it was a lot of diapers, a lot of baby socks, a lot of cute little outfits. I think a kid got cowboy boots. So that was just another really cute thing that we did. So Teacher of the Month. This is a new teacher. She, this is Mrs. Kristen Barnes. She's the health teacher, team sports, and one of the new volleyball coaches. The student said, "This teacher strives to make us the best human beings. Not only does she teach us very well, but she applies situations to the real world, so we are understanding it better. She includes everyone into class discussions to know more about how they think and to make sure she is teaching us right. Her dedication and hard work really shows. Every day I walk in, I actually want to be there. And her positive mood and smile is so contagious. For being a new teacher to the district, she is one of the best. Thank you for your consistent service to students at SGS." And then I just wanted to say thank you to you guys because we really, really could not do what we do without you guys. You guys are so eager to know what we are doing, and it really motivates us to continue wanting to make our school better and improve in all sorts of areas. So we really, really appreciate you guys. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
I think the maintenance crew is pretty proud of that hallway, too, because at the Veterans Assembly, Davey took me downstairs just to show me those pictures.
It was really neat.
And now we have standardized test scores with Dr. McLeod.
Almost as exciting as test score reports. All right. Sure. So the first title slide, just to let you know, APR did come out publicly, I think, yesterday. So I did create an APR slide today, but we're going to wait until next month to go over that. In our next slide, we have our ACT test data. And there's a few takeaways that I had putting all this together. One, you can tell different stories with data depending on how you're using data. Two, we have shown tremendous growth, and we should be committed. Teachers should be committed for the work that they're putting in. And really, those are my two big takeaways. I'll get to the third takeaway when we go over APR. But in our ACT, our test scores have gone up. And this is something that Mr. Tunes have shared with me. It's interesting to see Desi's report, and I'm going to get into the weeds a little bit. One of Desi's reports pulls it in November, and it's only for seniors. So when you compare that, the numbers look different because this is us testing, pulling the test for all of our kids. And so this is more of a comparison of every student that's taken the ACT in '22, '23. So it gives you a better outlook of what we actually have. So our super score is basically the best score at that point. So that's really the score that colleges are looking at. So it's really a 20.1 versus 19.8 on average. Our APR, Annual Performance Report, there's two categories, Status and Growth. Mainly, we're going to be talking about status right now. We've changed over to MSIP 6, and we're in year two of that. They will take our data for three years and do a three-year average to determine accreditation. Right now, our accreditation will stay the same. Of course, we've got the waiver for APR, so our accreditation will actually stay the same for several years because of that. But just to let you know, this is how the index point values are calculated. And we went over this last year with them being incremental. But I think it's important to point out how they're weighted as well because that does play a part in your APR score. If you notice, below basic is a range of 1 to 2.99. All the other ones have essentially a .99 range, with advanced only having a range of just 5. So when you start averaging these together, to be able to get a proficient of 4 when you're averaging all the student scores, below basic, you have to overcome one below basic several times in order to get an average of 4 to get your full APR points. Something to remember for next month. All right, Building and Grade Level Data. As I said, overall, in almost every category, our scores are up. The distance between us and the state is increased, and state scores have been going up across the board as well. So good news for Missouri, great news for us. So ELA, 3rd, 4th, 5th, let me get down and see if there's any special notes. I won't go into detail on every single one of them, but just to point out that all scores are up compared to last year, and we have outpaced the state even more. Most of these graphs are set up this way. So if you look at the top three bars, that's the state. And then the bottom bars are us. In this case, it's Bloomsdale and St. Jen Elementary combined. These are our MPI scores that we referenced in the previous slide. So if you remember the different ranges with the 4s being proficient, basically. So we're doing well on average. And like I said, our scores have increased in ELA 3rd through 4th, or 3rd through 5th. And the gap between us and the state has grown even though the state scores have gone up. So that's good news. In 7th, or 6th through 8th, our scores have remained high as well. Our distance between the state, we are on average 2.9 to 9 points higher than the state. So we're still outpacing the state as well, and we're doing well in that area as well. Our EOCs in high school, again, the state is on the top, we're on the bottom. As you can see, we've scored higher than the state as well. Our scores are up 13.8 as opposed to last year. And then our mathematics data, again, 3rd through 5th. All state scores are up again. Our scores are significantly up, ranging from 6 to 20 points higher than what they were last year. So our scores are continuing to increase as time is going over. And some of that we can accredit to, well, we went through the pandemic and getting back to things. But I think we can also accredit it to the amount of work and time that our teachers are putting in. Math, 7th through 8th, again, our scores are up. And our gaps between the state, you can see, are pretty significant. I think it's 33 points to 47 points higher than the state, so. Algebra 1 and Algebra 2, fun story. Most of the time, we're giving Algebra 1 in the past, but as we are transitioning to some of the new rules, they have to take Algebra 1 after they finish Algebra 1, meaning that students can get to take two EOCs if they're lucky enough. So this year, this past year was the first year we were able to administer it to a student in Algebra 2. We'll see a lot more scores next year when we're reporting, right?
I think it's the following year. I think it's one more year that will come on the books, which will be really interesting because that gap year, we will not test any of those top students that Dr. Mercer has in the middle school that are taking the advanced algebra class. Those students now have to take it in 8th grade, which means that there will be one year that those students won't be compiled in with our algebra scores. So when that happens, we will have to wait until those students take that Algebra 2 test, which will be traditionally, it is two years after that number. So that will actually come their sophomore year. So there will be a little bit of a gap there where those top students won't be tested. So it'll be interesting to see what happens to scores when that does happen. So I do say that to prepare us for what that will look like.
Yeah. And our Algebra 1 scores are up 21 points, and we've outpaced the state even more than we have in the past. And our student that took the Algebra 2 beat out the state as well. In science, our scores are up, and we've outpaced the state even more again. In 5th grade, we're 30.5 points higher. In 8th grade, again, the state scores are up, and ours are 26 points higher. And then Biology EOCs, it's a close race, but our scores are actually up, and we have outpaced the state even more. So even though that gap maybe doesn't look like the 40, 50-point gap, which is a pretty significant gap, ours is actually getting farther than the state as opposed to last year. And then in Social Studies, we've remained consistent, and we're five points higher than the state. And then again, our APR came out yesterday. I put the presentation together. I do want to point out, just so you're ready because it's out in the public, our percentage has gone down. But as you can tell from all our tests, we've shown tremendous growth. Our status is actually better when you look at those scores. So my point to, sometimes you can tell a different story with the same So, my point to, sometimes you can tell a different story with the same data. That's the case. I think there's terms that are being used that are not accurate in what an average citizen would say. Like, for instance, growth. I think when people hear growth, they mean you started here, you got to here, that's the growth you're showing. But, the growth on APR is more of a comparison. You don't even know what your growth target is until everybody takes a test and you're compared against. It's a ranking system. And so, I think the big takeaway for this is to know that we are showing improvement in student scores. And what teachers are doing is effective for students. And that we are showing growth. And we're continuing comparatively even to the state to show advancement for those scores. So, I think that is it for my report. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And in your board docs, you will find some safety reports.
Thank you, sir. Next we have unfinished business and the first item on that is the Prop SG update.
Not a lot this month. I say not a lot and I show you the pictures. It's coming along nicely. They've got the outside covered. I peeked out today. The metal studs are up. They're working on HVAC and the next picture here will show you the HVAC sitting on top of that structure as well. It's really starting to come together. As you peek in the window, you can start to see it forming. But, it's happening pretty fast. Those guys are working really hard. I don't want to say anything about the weather because I don't want to jinx this. The Early Childhood Center, Bailey went out today and took some drone footage. You can actually see kind of the footprint of where that's going to go. This is really, really exciting. Kind of where the sidewalk might be, the foundations for where the outer walls of the building are going to be. They've been able to go out and work consistently out there as well.
Came up 61 today. You can really see it.
Peaked over there to the left. We do have the bid opening tomorrow, 2 o'clock, for the remainder of the Early Childhood Center. Fingers crossed, toes crossed. We're hoping those bids come in. We're hoping they're competitive. We'll leave it at that.
How many have you received?
Chrissy, did we get any? They usually come in at the last minute, yeah. And Colin usually brings some with him that have been submitted to him as well. So far, we've had good luck with having some competition for multiple matches. We are opening them tomorrow too.
Oh, opening, okay.
Alright, thank you. Next, we have the instructional program presentation of middle school art.
Hi, how's it going? I'm Becky Kay, middle school art teacher. I brought all the decorations tonight.
They look great.
Thank you. I didn't do any of it. It's all the kids. So, this is my fifth year teaching at SGMs. The summer after my first year, I did a curriculum rewrite. And I've spent the last three years kind of collecting notes on what works and what doesn't work. You know, listening to Jamie Bowman and getting her feedback in terms of like what the kids are missing and what they need from me. So, I'm up for curriculum rewrite this coming summer. So, I'm spending this school year kind of redoing my curriculum according to those notes and reorganizing everything. So, I teach four different art classes at the middle school. Art 1, Art 2, Art 3, and then play production, design. It used to be Art 6 and then Art 1, Art 2. Was that two years ago that we reorganized that? So, Art 6 used to be just for 6th graders. And it wasn't a prereq to have Art 6 to get into Art 1. And it was just kind of, so I would get some kids in Art 1 that didn't have any background. So, we reorganized that and that's worked out really, really well. So, you can go on to the next slide. So, what I kind of focus on is getting the kids to understand that it's okay to make mistakes. I think a lot of times, they get that final paper and they freak out and they think that they can't make mistakes on that. So, we spend a lot of time practicing before I give them that final paper. So, they're a little bit more confident going into it. It's also mutually beneficial for me because I can set my expectations. I don't accept any kind of poor effort. I will make them redo it and redo it and redo it until it at least takes the same amount of time that it takes a kid that puts in the maximum amount of effort. It makes them really, really angry. But, they're starting to learn that I won't accept that and they're starting to try to do it the right the first time around, which is awesome. And then the other thing that I don't do is I don't give any zeros. I don't allow them to say like, "Oh, I'll just take a zero on that." Because they really don't care. So, I will pull them for tutoring. I will pull them every opportunity that I get to make sure that they turn in everything that I require of them. It's not unknown for me to have 30 to 40 kids in my classroom on tutoring days. It's a lot of fun. So, Art 1, we focus on the elements of art. So, this board over here is my Art 1 board. I'm not going to go through every single one of these slides. But, basically, kind of the organization of each element is we go through, we do a pre-quiz, which is just a 10-question, multiple-choice. We do a Google Slides class discussion that's kind of like an interactive Google Slides. You guys can click on that if you want to go through all of them. And then we do the post-quiz, which is the same 10 questions that I asked them at the beginning of the class. So, you can kind of see that progress. Usually, those three things happen in the same day. So, you know, we kind of check them and make sure that they're paying attention at the same time. Then we do a project demo, whether it's, you know, them learning how to use the materials, whether it's like the actual project that they're doing, or kind of combination of both. So, that's kind of the organization of every single unit and every single element. And the kids have really responded well to it because they know what to expect. That's every single one, we go through and do that same kind of order. So, the first element of line, we worked on watercolors and using line to create movement. This one is really important to me because it kind of gives me a baseline for what their skill level is at. So, just because I expect max effort doesn't mean that I expect perfection from all of my students. I understand that not everybody is artistically inclined. But, you know, so this gives me a good baseline of where they're at. And then I kind of meet them where they're at throughout the semester. So, then, the next one is shape, value, and form. So, then we move on to pencil and they start to learn all of the different shading techniques. Sippling, hatching, crosshatching, scumbling, and then solid shading. So, they start to learn how to use the pencil to create value from light to dark, use blending stumps, and then using that value to create three-dimensional shapes. So, that goes on into the form, which they took. I actually have like a bucket of wooden forms that they set up like it's still life on their table. And they draw that from their perspective. They set it up however they want and then they draw it from their perspective. And then they have to use a different shading style for each of those three forms. So, that was good. And then, the next, we kind of, you know, just keep building on that. Then we added in space and learning how to create depth in artwork. We stuck with pencil for a little while because we took those just geometric forms and then turned them into like real-life forms. So, basketballs and softballs and boxes and cones, all of that kind of stuff. And then also added in some one-point perspective with the game board, with the checkerboard. The kids really, really liked that project. We had to do quite a bit of practice for them to understand the overlapping and the size and scale and things getting smaller as they get farther away from you. But, the kids really ended up liking that project. So, after we finished space, we moved into color. For color, we use colored pencils. We're super, super blessed here. And I splurge and get the awesome Prismacolor Scholar colored pencils, which everybody else thinks I'm a real nerd because I really enjoy those. But, they just blend better and I give me better results from the kids because they find it easier to work with. It just has a softer lead that blends better. So, the kids really, really like them. So, for this one, a lot of it, they did, they worked through the video step by step in learning how to burnish colors together to get them to blend together to make different colors. They learned about different color schemes. And then that rolled into, you can kind of see them down at the bottom over here, the initial, their initial project. So, for that, they had to choose two different color schemes, which involved making a selection of a set of colors for each one of them that would contrast with one another and make the letter stand out. And then the last element that we talked about is texture. This is the first year that I have done ceramics in middle school because we don't have a kiln. But, Jamie Bowman was awesome and she fired these for me. It was kind of an act happy accident. We ordered the wrong clay for Mrs. McDaniel this year. And she's like, "I don't want anything to do with this." She usually orders air-dry and they ordered like the regular stuff. I was like, "I'll take it off your hands." So, then I wanted to get rid of it. So, I found these awesome, this project, which is ceramic dragon eyes. And then you can just order like the actual eyeball off Amazon. So, it turned out really, really cool. What they had to do, implied texture, so they had to draw, there's two more in the back of each of those sheets. They had to draw four of them for implied texture. And then they actually had to create their dragon eye with terra-cotta clay. And then at the very end, which is perfect for the end of the semester, they got to paint them. Keeps them really entertained. So, that's kind of my Art 1 class in a nutshell. I'm really, you know, I reorganized everything. I'm really happy with kind of the flow of all of that and how that worked together and how that progressed. So, I'm going to continue kind of with all of that and when I rewrite curriculum this summer. That's kind of the order of everything that I will do. Then we've got Art 2, which is, we focus on the principles of design. You know, the order of this is the same thing. I start with the pre-test, we go do the Google Slides, we do that post-test. Those are all in the same day. The kids know what to expect. The pre-test is never graded. They know that post-test is going to be graded, you know, taken for a grade. So, they pay more attention when I'm talking, which is always great. Makes you feel good. So, the first one we went through is the principle of movement and repetition, which was the optical illusion boxes in the corner. The kids, I struggled with Art 2 this semester, I'm going to be really honest. Because all of, everything was very, very repetitive and the kids lost interest in it. So, you know, I hit all of the requirements for my standards. But, I'm going to kind of rework some of the projects so that they're not as repetitive. But, they've done a great job in everything that they've done. So, the optical illusions, they really worked on, you know, measuring and being consistent with their measurements. And then also their fine motor skills with tracing all of their lines and boxes. So, that was the first one, movement and repetition. Then we had repetition and unity. They got to choose an object. They were supposed to bring in an object. Some of them didn't. So, then they ended up using some of my art supplies. So, you've got staplers, some compasses, a hammer. But, they had to choose that object. And then they used their phones to take nine different pictures. It was supposed to be nine different viewpoints of that object. In each viewpoint, they had to create repetition with certain elements of that. As you can see, some of them have nine and some of them have six because that one dragged on so long that I ended up taking three of them for extra credit and then six was the requirement. So, they really kind of struggled through that one, but it turned out really, really great. So, that was repetition and unity. And then emphasis and unity, I messed that up, it was supposed to be emphasis and balance. I wanted to go away from anything with paper and pen and I worked with, the kids worked with collage. And then they had to choose two sets of colors that would contrast with one another and then create those different points of emphasis. And also balance them out so that it kind of made the viewer's eye move out throughout the whole entire artwork. Like I said, I'm happy with how the products turned out. I think that I'm going to kind of rework some of those projects this next semester for Art 2 so that it works out a little bit better and it's not as repetitive for the kids. Because I want them to enjoy it too. So, then Art 3. So, like I said, I've been kind of shuffling things around. I used to kind of sprinkle in different art contests within Art 1 and Art 2 in the past. I'm sure you guys have seen on Facebook, we've had quite a few students that have been recognized for their artwork. But, I found that they, I was working through things in the middle of those that they should have already had that foundation. So, now I'm taking all of those art contests and pushing them to Art 3. So, they have the foundation with all of these materials before we get to that so that I can kind of set them loose and they can start kind of developing their own thoughts a little bit. So, these are some of the art contests that we will do. I usually only have Art 3 in the spring. So, this is the Art Blooms. It's through the Missouri Arts Council, I think. They do a banner contest. So, they come up with a theme every year. I actually just got the theme for this coming January. But, they come up with a theme and then if your students are selected, their artwork actually gets printed on a light post banner. And our banners always get hung in Farmington. So, last year, we had four students that had banners. And I think the theme for that one was Outside My Window. So, we have Lily Sapi, Hayden Fontno, Mackenzie Greer, and Kaia Plati. Okay, then the second one we always do is the Inclusive Art Show. This will be the third annual art show this coming March. And that's my buddy Hunter. He's been in my class for three years now. And the theme for last year's art show was kind of based on the fact that he loved watercoloring. So, I have like 50 sheets of 18 by 24-inch watercolors by Hunter. So, I took those and cut them up. And me and the other art teachers in the district turned it into this awesome hunter's garden and made the flowers. So, that was really cool. So, this is the third annual. The first year, we had 250 pieces of artwork. Last year, we had over 400. And I expect it to grow even more this year. The theme for this coming year is cosmic kaleidoscope, out of this world inclusion. We're going to start to have to max out the number of pieces because I'm running out of room. It's a pretty limited space up there. I've got three of these rolling boards now, three of the rolling boards now. And I think that's probably the most we'll be able to fit into that space. But, that art show is Friday, March 22nd from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Common Grounds. So, these are just a couple pictures from last year's show.
What was the time?
Did you say 6 to 8? 6 to 9. Yes. And then these were the middle school winners from last year. The top left, the first place is Carson French. The flowers in the middle is Lily Sapi. The top right is Rebecca Palmer. And then the bottom right is Hayden Fontno. And then the middle, the bottom middle, it's on the tip of my tongue, I'll come up with it later. You remember who did them. It's just coming up those names that's difficult sometimes. The other one that we always participate in is the Illustrating America Art Contest. That's run by the VFW Auxiliary. We've had a couple students that place. And this one, that's one that's kind of progressive. So, it starts local and then it moves to regional, then it moves to the state, and then it moves to national. I think the highest that we've gotten, we had somebody that won at the state level and moved to the national level, but didn't go any further after that. So, on the left is Riley Maul. In the middle is Blair Bowman. And on the right is Kalen Holland. Okay, we also do, in the fall, if I have an Art 3 in the fall, we will do kind of similar theme to that one is U.S. Constitution Day. It's the U.S. Courts 7th and 8th Circuits. And it's kind of a similar theme. Usually, they have more of a theme to it. So, they'll kind of hone in on something that they want to. I don't remember off the top of my head. I think the two on the left, the theme was, they had to pick what amendment was most important to them. So, then they had to, so the student on the left, Claire Geisler, she chose the freedom of religion. And then I'm not sure, I don't remember who the other two are. I'm sorry. It's from a couple of years ago. We do the Wildlife Forever Fish Art Contest. I haven't had any students that have placed in this one, but they always come up with some pretty great stuff. The Wildlife Forever, they also have a Songbird Art Contest. So, on this one, I don't remember who got first, who got second, who got third. They were all fighting over it though. The far left is Jake Parker. You can hear it now, especially Jake and Anna. The middle is Anna Fisher and the right is Lily Sapi. And we also do the same, they didn't do it last year, which both Carla Basler and I were pretty disappointed. pretty disappointed. I don't know what happened, but they usually do a writing and art contest. So this was from a couple of years ago. I believe it have, it had a theme, but I don't remember what the theme was. So this is a couple of pieces of artwork that the students had. And then the last one that I always do at the end of the school year is the mineral art contest. So in the top left, you have Haley Hildebrandt. The next one is Isla Wolke, Joseph Rottler, Sawyer Bowman, and then the lower left, Kaya Ploddy. Oh man, I'm going to draw, I'm drawing a blank on this one. This was a couple of years ago. He looks different now. Camden Weiner and then Lily, no, Lucy. And then each of my classes, they have sketchbook drawings. My art one class, they do sketchbook drawings that are very regimented and I teach them a different, or the videos teach them a different drawing technique for each of them. Art two, they get a little bit more flexible. I think I'm going to experiment with kind of having more choice pieces and them creating artwork that they want to create. And then same thing for art three, I want to have something that they want to create versus something that I'm giving them to create, because I think sometimes that drives them crazy. Well, that's fun sometimes, I want to give them some choice. And then the last class that I teach is the play production design. I co-teach this with Carla Basler. She teaches the drama side of things and I teach the creative side of things. So we talk about, we go through and we teach the kids how to use the light board down at the pack, how to use the different channels, how to play with the slides. They learn how to use the soundboard, both on, they have, there's an app that connects and how to use, they, they are in charge of doing all of this on the play night. And then we work to teach them how to use all of these different things throughout the semester. We also do the costume design, which is why I brought that beautiful rack of clothes. We did that, we did little Christmas skits for the kindergarten and the preschool classes over the last few weeks. It was really fun. The kids really enjoyed it. We do all the prop design for the, the school plays. So this is, I don't, have you guys been down to the basement of the pack ever? Yeah. No, you guys should go down there sometime. It's super. Look at that, it's beautiful. It's so clean. So this is the set design, so those are all of our flats and, and supports. The kids are the ones that paint all of this. I give them a little inspiration and they usually run with it. That's all, then another view of the, the pack basement. That was the set from their, our fall play, Secret of Skull Island. They also are responsible for creating the playbill. You can click on that, that's a link. So they go through and they, they pull the graphics for the, the play. They go through and type in, you know, the, the writer and all the students and, and what their job was on the play night. So the students create that for the play. And then kind of keeping all of that organized, it gets pretty overwhelming when you're thinking about all the characters and like all of them having to have all of the different pieces. So I have spreadsheets, you can click on any of those. And the kids all have access to this and they go in and they plug in all of the furniture that we need. Each of the characters, what they're going to be wearing and then we go through and, and figure out, we'll go through the basement of the pack together. They'll pull costumes for the different characters. We'll figure out what we don't have, anything that we don't have in the basement of the pack. What the labyrinths, they're really great. They do vouchers for us, so we just go up there. All the students, we started having them sign like field trip forms for the whole semester. I'll throw a couple of kids in my car, we'll go up there and, and they'll pick out all the rest of the costumes for the stuff that we don't already have. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Becky, thanks for bringing all this in. The passion you have for it. And if you ever go to the art show and you want to buy something, you buy it fast. Because it will sell. Oh my goodness, so now we go on to property liability and workers' compensation.
Yes, we've received our bill for music. Music is Missouri United School Insurance Council. They provide us with insurance and coverage on the following things, property and equipment, general liability, buses, school board liability, workers' compensation, treasurer's bond, cyber liability, and pollution liability. I included in your packet a video from Ron Orr, just kind of explaining, as you can see on the slide, rates are up significantly from the prior year and we did not receive a credit. And in that video, he goes into a few reasons why. There were some significant claims which reduced the reserves and what they're trying to do is to increase those reserves in case claims continue to be what they were last year, with the hopes that they're not and they would be able to, to not increase so much. So you can see for 2024, our rate is $350,000, $350,763. So up significantly from the prior year, $308,909 and then we received a $31,000 credit. Just brought that down. That check hurts to write, but it is vitally important in order to protect our, our liability design. So I would recommend that you approve that.
A motion to approve the renewal assessment rate with the Missouri United Schools Insurance Council, music as presented. Paul, how many schools need music?
I don't know.
What percentage of schools?
I think it's very, very high.
It's got, yeah, it's.
I think it's the majority of them.
In the nineties.
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, I believe it was Mr. Reesinger. So I just want to tell the building principals, please tell your staffs also thank you, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And I believe tomorrow, they'll receive what we received.
Tomorrow, we will be delivering gifts, yes.
I think they'll love it.
That's not even the word. That's part of it.
And next, we go into the adjournment of open session and back to closing. Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr.
Gettinger. Any personnel changes approved during closed session, we provided in the draft meeting minutes within 72 hours of adjournment.
All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn the open session of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of the St. Genevieve County School Board, County R2 School District. Do a roll call vote.
For the second.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a second, Mr. Basler, sorry. I don't have, the statutes didn't come, drop down for me.
They're the next one down.
Okay, wait a minute.
So I have a motion and a second to adjourn open session. All in favor? Any opposed? And now we're off.
Okay. Motion to resume a closed meeting with closed record and closed vote for the purposes listed in the revised Missouri statute, section 610.021. And roll call vote, hang on. I just stuck in the motion, I mean.
Second.
Please Mr. Basler again. Okay. Now the roll call vote. Jamie Ballou.
Yes.
Eric Basler.
Yes.
Dave Bova.
Yes.
Jerry Diesel, yes. Josh Gettinger.
Yes.
James Kirshner.
Yes.
Martha Reesinger. Carried seven, zero.
Thank you all, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you all.